Thank you, Mr. Garber. I always like that in need of. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on DB1 tonight. I understand the rationale for dissolving the Brownfield's standard review committee. Your resolution cites efficiency and a streamlined process. I agree with that general aim. Right now developers must pass through a review process that is uncoordinated, inflexible, and time-consuming. This needs fixing. But the Brownfield Committee is not part of the problem. I checked, and over the last 10 years, the committee has met exactly 12 times, barely once a year on average. This is not a burden. And Brownfield oversight is critical, not so much the site remediation activities; these are vetted by technical experts, but the non-environmental activities need close scrutiny. Here, the city is using the Brownfield Plan not to clean up a site, but rather to advance other goals. It's sometimes appropriate to reward developers with a Brownfield tax credit for doing something non-environmental that benefits the public.
Mr. Garber, your time will be paused. Can you turn the microphone on directly ahead of you?
I don't want to do that.
There's probably a button.
It should turn green.
Perfect. My apologies.
No, I'm glad to learn something. Should I start over?
It's your time, whatever you like.
Okay, it's running. So, as I was saying, I understand why you might want to dissolve the Brownfield Plan's Review Committee tonight on the basis of efficiency and a streamlined process, and I agree with that general aim. Right now developers pass through a convoluted review process that's inflexible and needs fixing, but the Brownfield Committee is not part of the problem. As I was saying, I checked, and over the last 10 years, the committee has met exactly 12 times, barely once a year on average, sometimes some years not at all. This is not a burden. Brownfield Plan oversight is critical, not so much the site remediation activities; these are vetted by technical experts, but the non-environmental activities need close scrutiny. Here, the city is using the Brownfield Plan not to clean up a site, but rather to advance other goals. It's sometimes appropriate to reward developers with a Brownfield tax credit for doing something non-environmental that benefits the public. But this is tricky. There is no clear line between a useful tax trade-off and a taxpayer giveaway to the developer. We need to be mindful of bad policy, overpaying, and favoritism. Staff negotiates these deals out of public view so they require sunlight. And once adopted, TIF tax credits are invisible. They don't show up on property tax bills, on millages, or in the city budget. The affected government entities—city, county, school board, district library, and mental health—often don't even know that they're missing the millage revenue, which can run into the millions just for non-environmental. The city is effectively deciding for all these entities. That's another reason for strict oversight. So these plans, especially the non-environmental elements, need careful scrutiny on the front end. That's why council voted unanimously in April 2003 to establish the review committee. Please keep it intact. This is a very capable city council, but you simply do not have the time or the bandwidth at your meetings to fully vet these complex and opaque plans. You may argue that the city's Brownfield policy, adopted in 2019, reduces the need for review. In fact, it adds a layer of complexity that makes separate review even more important. By dissolving the committee, you are also eliminating one of two chances for public comment. In conclusion, this committee poses no burden and provides needed oversight for the discretionary removal of millions in taxpayer dollars from the tax rolls for non-environmental purposes. Please do not dissolve it tonight. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ed Vilmeti.
Hi, my name is Ed Vilmeti. I live at 1210 Brooklyn Avenue. I was enlightened by Ken Garber's description of the Brownfield Plan— the Brownfield Plan Review Committee's infrequent meetings. I think I've been to two of those 12 meetings over the span of the last 10 years. I remember waiting a long time for minutes for some of them. One of the things that I think he brought up—and I'll repeat—is just the relatively light administrative burden for this committee relative to the relatively large sums being expended on Brownfield remediation and the tax dollars that go with that. A couple hours a year of oversight and a couple hours a year of listening to public commentary on these sorts of efforts seems like a good investment. The challenge with Brownfields is that, as a city, we tend to forget what came before us. We forget that there was a chemist living and doing his chemical experiments at what is now the Science Center. We forget where all of the landfills and dumps were. We just forget. You know, like, people from 100 years ago are not around now to tell us where not to go. And so we're rediscovering—or discovering—or like, some people know, of course, but most people don't—just how expensive it is to take land that we've destroyed and bring it back up to a space where it can be reused. And I think just for the public stewardship of the land that's under the city's orbit, I think it's a good idea to keep this function visible. I did look for other organizations that also have Brownfield oversight, and I did find the county, which does a pretty credible job of meeting on a regular basis and reporting on, on a regular basis, their efforts. An equivalent web search of the city website was not anywhere near as useful. So I guess the request is, if you're going to decide to remove the review committee, my ask would be, please put a mandate to report out on Brownfield activities on perhaps an annual basis to describe the locations under use and the funds expended or not collected, and make sure that people can keep tabs on bad decisions of the past, hopefully remediated in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ralph McKee.
Ralph McKee, phone number 556. Go ahead.
Hello, Ralph McKee, Fifth Ward, First Topic, Brownfield Committee. I would echo the comments by the two preceding speakers. I think they were well thought out. I just want to say this: The committee currently has the task of reviewing multimillion-dollar Brownfield TIF plans, one or two a year. One of the policy standards previously set is that a developer asking for TIF dollars for non-environmental items has to give a percentage to affordable housing. The committee recently, including some new members, met, overrode a staff recommendation of denial on the village project because the developer didn't propose any housing dollars for any term for the non-environmental items, and then recommended dissolving itself. I understand that Councilmember Song said a while back, essentially, "Don't worry about this. The county also has to approve and does its own due diligence," so there's other regulatory bodies here. The county just recently met on the same village project, and several commissioners said, essentially, "We should defer to the city." So it appears that's really not a viable solution. It's our oversight, the city's oversight, that is going to essentially be potentially rubber scammed by the county, and the commissioners essentially said that, and so did the person in charge of that for the county. These are big-dollar projects. This is big affordable housing dollars. I think shirking responsibility to carefully review these plans is a mistake. Next topic, the Brook Street construction. The first issue, the bid process. There have been some past discussions, some heated, of the best value policy. There were often memos describing the bid amounts along with the differences in contract practices. To be transparent, we should be able to see the additional amounts we're paying over the low bid and what we're presumably getting for those extra dollars. But all the contracts on today's agenda, at least as far as I could tell, don't have that information; they just have the raw scores. That's a pretty good way to prevent any critiques of the bid process. You can't see the additional dollars, and you have to guess what the perceived value was. On several recent contracts, the deciding factor was worker development. What was that?
Thirty seconds.
An apprenticeship program, maybe? Better training? Isn't the public entitled to have some idea of what we're actually getting for the extra dollars? Add to the project itself, I wouldn't block away. I just hope that the promise will be kept, as that there will be some curb bump outs to save some of the dozens of mature trees which are in the path of the proposed segment. I walk that street regularly and with no safety concerns, and I'll be sad if all the trees are cut down, to say nothing of the lost climate benefits of having them. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Henry Herskowitz.
I'd like to respond to the rather personal comments I received from council members when I spoke here on April 17th. I do not wish to respond in kind. Rather, I come before you tonight with understanding. I've spoken about the Holocaust at least a dozen times prior to this evening. No council member, past or present, has corrected any of the claims made during those 12 appearances. How do most people, myself included, come to understand this historical event? I offer Casablanca, Sophie's Choice, and Schindler's List. I also offer the Holocaust museums we have locally and nationally, and the constant reminders the press reiterates again and again. My friend refers to this as the mighty Wurlitzer, spinning the same songs over and over. In other words, we have been coaxed—not logically convinced—in to our "knowledge," in quotes. And as they say, you cannot argue a person out of a position they didn't argue themselves into. When people are presented with facts that run counter to what they assume they know, a great cognitive dissonance sets in. They then have two choices: either consider what is being said to have possibilities of being true, or assault the character of the person saying them. It's human nature, not necessarily mean-spiritedness. Consider the first choice—I'm sure you all have. What happens if one of you says publicly that there might be some merit in Henry's words, words to date that have not been challenged? Do you really think you'll win reelection? Look what happened to Ali Ramlawi after he accepted a small donation from me. He's no longer here. What if one of you votes to suspend military aid to Israel? I think we all know the answer. Reasonable people can disagree, using reason and not emotions. And I hope that as I continue to address this vital topic, reason and logic, along with respect, will prevail. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jean Henry.
I'm going to tie my tongue and not respond to that last speaker. Hi, council. I am one of the many in our community who knew Jude Walton and counted on her to be community-engaged, honest, forthright, generous, and solutions-oriented and compassionate. In that spirit, I'm here to ask you to create a city task force on gender-based violence. There is no denying that Jude's murder was the result of gender-based violence. There is no denying that our city has failed to seriously address this pervasive problem. It is long past time to take action. Sexual assault is the only crime, violent or property, in which our city has a higher incidence rate per capita than the rest of Michigan and the country at large. That rate has increased over the last 10 years. Forty-three percent of U.S. women experience some form of sexual violence. One in three U.S. women experience some form of physical violence. That's over 20,000 women each impacted in this city. Black, Indigenous, people of color, transgender, non-binary, and lower-income citizens experience higher rates of gender-based violence, along with increased severity, duration, and fatality. Prior incidence of gender-based violence is the single greatest predictor of mass shootings. Sixty-three percent of all mass shooters have histories of gender-based violence. Aggression towards women, including stalking, harassment, as well as physical violence, is predictive of other violent crime. I understand that domestic violence victim services are provided by outside agencies, usually at the county level. I am not calling for duplicating those services; I am asking for prevention. A city resident who feels unsafe calls city emergency responders. Jude once called the police department for aid when an ex was refusing to leave her home. They wouldn't intervene until a man with influence in the city called and demanded action on her behalf. Over 10 years ago, I remember Jude complained about people using her backyard as a shortcut to West Park from Delano's in downtown. When she and neighbors applied for a fence permit, they were denied because their homes were in a floodplain. Her murderer accessed her home from the rear and was staying at Delano's. Please take a moment to let that sink in. Those are just two stories from Jude's experience. There are more which signal opportunities lost to increase her safety as a single woman living alone. And there are so many more citizens with stories of gender-based violence and harassment to tell. Each of those stories could lead to an action at the city governance level that would show we, as a city, are willing to step up to the challenge of responding adequately to the risk posed to vulnerable citizens. The research is abundant; the funding for this work at the state and federal level is abundant. We have a community capacity and expertise. We have gender-based violence programs at every level of government except in this city.
Thank you.
Do we have the will? What would Jude do in your place? Please honor her legacy by seriously considering this request. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Lauren Sargent.
My name is Dr. Lauren Sargent. I live on Ember Way in Ann Arbor. I'm an Ann Arbor resident for almost 40 years, a fourth-generation Michigander. And tonight, I am urging all of you here to exercise courage. Please speak unanimously with one clear voice. Ann Arbor will stop permitting investments in toxic and climate-disrupting gas infrastructure. No vote, or not even bringing a vote before us, is a no vote. It's a no vote on climate action that we absolutely urgently require. We are in a declared climate emergency. We have an A2-0 goal of powering our grid with 100% renewables by 2030. There is no possible way that we can even approximate this goal unless we stop permitting investment in fossil fuel infrastructure, right here in Ann Arbor. We need to electrify everything and power it with renewables and efficiency. We at Wasana350 have a motto: "When you're in a hole, first stop digging." Gas infrastructure is a huge gaping hole, perhaps the largest that we here can control. We need to cut that off immediately. Today, I just read that in a part of southern France, there are three communes that have no water. That's 3,000 people who have no water. There are forest fires raging in those areas that don't normally even start until maybe July or August, and they've cut off water for everything except for hygiene and emergency medical use. No agriculture. That's today. The Energy, Environmental, and Writers Commissions have all passed resolutions calling for no new gas infrastructure for new and substantially remodeled buildings. Please schedule and vote yes on a gas ban. You, as council members, are the only ones who have the ability to make this policy a reality. Please. We need to put this community's money where our mouth is. We need to act as if our hair is on fire. The forests already are. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Petals Sandcastle.
Petals Sandcastle, if you're on the phone, can you please raise your hand? Mayor, I don't see the caller on Zoom.
In the caller's absence, we'll move on. Our next speaker is Blaine Coleman.
For 20 years—
You sign it down. Can't see the podium. Can't see the front. Will you sign it?
This sign? It says, "We are—" My sign, which Ed Vilmeti is objecting to, says, "We are against military aid to Israel." This is the language of our resolution. For 20 years, we have been demanding that this city council approve a resolution against military aid to Israel. In other words, we've been demanding that you stop funding the Holocaust against the Palestinian people. We have demanded that you at least, at least allow a resolution objecting to the funding of this Holocaust against the Palestinian people. And you have thrown all your weight into silencing any such resolution. You have thrown all your weight into making damn sure that the Palestinians keep getting killed with your money and with your party's political support. After this public speaker part of the meeting is over, you're going to be talking a lot of shit about the Holocaust. Oh, God, how you hate the Holocaust. Yeah, it did happen. Yeah, 6 million Jews were killed by Hitler. Yeah, actually, 27 million Russians were also killed by Hitler. Somewhere between 5,000 and 15,000 gay people were killed by Hitler. Somewhere approximating maybe 500,000 Roma gypsies were killed by Hitler. Yeah, that all happened. But you, you don't give a good goddamn about Holocausts because—whatever you say—because you have made sure that the Holocaust against the Palestinian people continues. You have made sure that no resolution has been even allowed to reach the city council for a vote in over 20 years. Your own Ann Arbor Human Rights Commission, in December 2003, urged you to approve a resolution against military aid to Israel. You reacted by stripping the commission of their staff, forcing out the chairperson of that commission, and replacing its members. And there sits Jen Eyre, who took money for her campaign from old friends of the Israel Defense Forces. This is the kind of city council we have now. This city council continues to push the Holocaust against the Palestinian people. Shame.
Our next speaker is Mohan Savabiy Asafani.
Hello, Ann Arbor. Happy May Day. Today is the International Workers' Day across the globe, and workers show solidarity with each other. And I am showing my solidarity with working people of Ann Arbor. I am here to say that over 80 years ago, a Holocaust did happen. 6 million Jews and 27 million Russians were murdered by Nazi Germany. A Holocaust did happen 80 years ago, where 27 million Russians and 6 million Jewish people were killed by Nazi Germany. Many Germans stood by and watched as Jewish people were pushed into gas chambers and murdered. Many Germans stood by and watched that happen. Ann Arbor City Council is doing the same thing while a genocide, a Holocaust, of Palestinian people is happening right under their noses. They are pushing Palestinians into their extinction, and they want us to believe they are not racist. They are racist. A Holocaust happened 80 years ago, and people like Ann Arbor City Council allowed it to go on. At the same time in Germany, when people were being killed by Nazis, very few Germans stood up and said, "No." Those people are rarely remembered. I am those who stood up against the genocide. I am among those who stand against murder of Palestinians. And you are doing exactly what German public did while Nazis were murdering Jewish population. You are the racist Mayor Taylor. You are the racist city of Ann Arbor City Council people. You are the racist. You are the anti-Samite. I am not. I am against racism, and I am against all kinds of Holocausts, and I have fought against all kinds of racism. My record shows it. It is shameful that you hide behind 80 years ago Holocaust and allow one to happen right now. It is obvious you're lying. It is obvious you're racist, because you use every excuse to halt, to stop, or demand, which is the demand of thousands of Arabs in this community, that we want no more military aid to Israel. You stop that. You smother us. No more military aid to Israel.
Thank you.
And I don't ever want you racist to ever thank me.
Our next speaker is Jeff Heiner.
Yeah, thank you. As I was sitting there, and these folks have been coming down here, what, 18, 19 years now, and nobody even seems to—
You had every chance to help us, and you didn't.
Yeah, I know. She's right. She's absolutely right, and I accept that. I accept her shaming. She's right. I don't mind that she's interrupting me. I had every chance to act on it, and I failed to act. And it's to my great shame that I did. You know, I apologize to the Palestinian community here in Ann Arbor that I failed to act. Well, not here. So hopefully, we can provide a world forum here. I'm here to talk about the dissolution of the Brownfield Committee, the Brownfield Review Committee, which I sat on when I was on city council. And it actually occurred to me that—I think the mayor and I are the only two people in this room that have served a full term here in this chambers. And for certain, I'm sat on more of those Brownfield meetings than anybody else here in this room. There's no doubt about it. And I think it's shameful to use the terms of our previous speakers, that you're going to get rid of this committee, that you're going to take the trust that the electors of the city, all 121,000 some of us, gave to this body to oversee these important programs that have long-term implications for the health of our economy, that are economic tools that can be used for good, that are environmental tools that, when used properly, can be used for good. And you're going to punt and shirk your responsibility. You're going to really set aside the public's trust in what you can do here at this table. And I think we've had pushing $90 million in tax, you know, forgone taxes in the last six years. That's a lot of money we've given away. And I do a loop, a couple loops every day around where they're doing the MishCon job, which has used some tax credits down there on the MishCon site. And you know, the MishCon site and some other sites here in our community have responsible parties. There is no way that we should be giving away tax dollars when there's a responsible party. And some of the mayor's toadies I've run into on my walks around there, and they don't have a clue what this is about. They say, "Isn't it great that they're cleaning this up?" Well, the "they" is us. We're the "they." Our tax dollars are cleaning this up. Our tax dollars are cleaning this up. And you want to shed that to the county? You want the county to be the ones to decide that? So that nine people, only three of which have any kind of geographic relationship to the city limits, are going to make those decisions for you? It's shameful. And I would like everyone to hear, I would like, before they say yes or no to this, to tell us why it is you don't think that the body that is charged in the law, the local unit of government, doesn't get to have a say in this, and thereby the 120,000 people that you represent.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Fitzpatrick.
Thank you for your time. I'm here to speak in favor of the unarmed crisis response and wellness check proposal with a personal story, a story of mental health. My wife and I married in 2018 and enjoyed two years as newlyweds, then COVID hit. In quarantine and also working from home, we spent 24 hours a day and seven days a week together for years. Through counseling, we also learned that both my wife and I suffer from severe childhood trauma. For everyone in this room who has had a relationship or is in a relationship, I think can respect the fireworks that that recipe just cooked up. In the fall of last year, an argument rose to crisis level. For the first time, I was scared. It was late on a Sunday evening, when neither one of us could reach our counselors. I felt so over my head, I called 911. A friend had recently told me about unarmed crisis wellness checks. I asked the dispatcher, please send an unarmed response team for a wellness check. 30 minutes later, three police cars arrived. We both cooperated, but I believed I was asked leading questions while in a vulnerable state for the purpose of making an arrest. I don't fault the police. They were extremely compassionate and helpful. But because my wife had self-harmed, and because I had a small cut and a bruise, my wife was arrested. But this is not a story with a sad ending. My wife and I got the counseling, we're in a great place together, and we're overcoming a lifetime of childhood trauma together. We've learned to support each other and are in a functioning and healthy marriage. Spending the night in jail was extremely traumatic for my wife. It was also costly. Legal fees, logistics, hotel rooms, court costs, put expenses over $10,000. But I can never erase the vision of my wife being walked to a patrol car in handcuffs, especially when I feel unarmed mental support was all I was calling for. Although the case was dismissed, my wife still has an arrest on her record, and I now fear for her citizenship. I loved reading the report on the unarmed crisis support team's status. Last year, it looked like money from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act was directed to the program. And according to a group called the Coalition for Revisioning Our Safety in Washtenaw County, that funding would allow the program to operate for the first year. Could that be the beginning? While other sources of funding are secured? I sincerely hope so. I can start treating, if we can start... Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Stalberg.
Tom Stalberg, phone number running in 534. Go ahead.
Good evening. This is Tom Stalberg, calling from Lower Town in Ann Arbor. And I'm calling to ask, to speak about the resolution dissolved the Brownfield Plan Review Committee and would advise against it. The previous speakers have done a wonderful job of covering many aspects of it. So I'm going to broaden what I'm going to say about it into what I see as a pot of deregulation and reduced oversight. Now, I'm an entrepreneur, I'm a capitalist, I believe in capitalism, but I believe in regulated capitalism. I don't want the Wild West in capitalism, I don't want the Wild West in government. Government has a role to play. As one of the speakers said, you are our representative. Whenever you reduce the amount of oversight, public scrutiny, public hearings, public information as provided, it reduces that window of the public, of the people you represent, of the citizens there in Ann Arbor, into how our government works. This particular item has to do with a lot of money and a relatively infrequent amount of time that the body needs to meet. But it's very important, the whole function of the Brownfield TIF aspect of cleaning up sites, especially orphan sites, is very valuable to get sites cleaned up that otherwise might not. But a lot of money changes hands. A lot of money, tax dollars, are involved. Public scrutiny should be, not just allowed, but embraced. Journalism has reduced these days, we all know that. Therefore, we need more public scrutiny, not less public scrutiny, whenever we have the opportunity. I believe dissolving this committee reduces the public scrutiny, reduces your helping us to have a window into how government works and how government deals with our tax dollars. There have been some good things that have come out of some Brownfield TIF in my neighborhood, in the Lower Town project. Unfortunately, $9 million of portable housing went by the wayside with an improper decision.
Thirty seconds.
I've seen the Brownfield TIF, 15 units, 15 units of a portable housing. We lost 93, but we got 15 in a Brownfield negotiation. Just one small example of where a council member was proud of what he felt he negotiated into a Brownfield tax increase financing situation. So there are opportunities for you, to make things better, and for us to have a window into how we do it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alan Haber. Mr. Haber, if we are unable to hear you in the absence of our being able to hear you, and I think we're going to move forward.